Everyone, I want to welcome everyone here tonight in person and also everyone online. At this time, we're going to call that November thirteenth regular board meeting to order. Uh, may we have the invocation by pastor Lee Farn.
Thank you for the opportunity to pray. Gracious God, thank you for the blessings of this wonderful community that we are proud of. We thank you tonight for our board of supervisors who we know, Lord, as they meet that they will have to make difficult decisions. We pray that you give them compassion and wisdom to make the choices that are best for our community. We thank you and praise you. It's in your name I come before you. Amen.
Mr. Fisher, will you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Yes, I would. I pledge allegiance to the Lord, to the Lord, and to his invisible, the reigning host and still among.
All right, now the approval of the agendas and any additions or corrections to we need to make for this panel?
Yes, sir, I've got two items. If we could move Virginia Department of Transportation up uh to the beginning of the presentations, they have another meeting that they need to attend. And then if the board would like, uh, we could uh move the closed meeting to after the public hearings, if that's okay.
Okay, can I have a motion to approve the agenda with the changes?
So moved.
Second.
Yeah. All right, uh, approval of the minutes. We have the October ninth, twenty twenty-five regular meeting minutes. Are there any additions or corrections? If not, can I have a motion to approve?
Second.
Second, okay. We have the October twenty-second, uh, twenty twenty-five special meeting minutes. Are there any additions or corrections? If not, can I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Can I have a second? Thank you. Okay, we have October twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-five was a special meeting. Uh, are there any additions or corrections? To the minutes? Not, can I have a motion for approval?
Move to approve.
The second?
Second.
Okay. Moving on, presentations, Mr. Beal.
Hey, thank you. It's good to be with you and appreciate uh the adjustment to the agenda, trying to be two places at once tonight. Um, we've been busy. Uh, the mowing and litter removal is completed countywide. We kept up with pothole patching. Uh, we trimmed some trees on Lewis Seta and we swept curb and gutter countywide as well as responding to incidents and work orders. Uh, we have uh some ditching to do on Lake Landing. We did finally get that pipe replaced on Gunion, uh, which I realized after um saying Ganyan uh for so long that I've been saying it wrong, but you all were gracious enough not to correct me in public, but I do, I do understand now that's Gunion Road now that it's complete. Uh, we have a pipe to replace on Lake Landing as well as a flood point road. Uh, some shoulder repairs to make on Cone Stage and uh we continue cutting brush on Lewis Seta, Cowards and Doctor's Point. Um, tis the season for the um snow, uh, snow prep. Um, so we have our dry runs next week. We have all our equipment shined up and ready to go. Um, we appreciate all the vendors that help us remove snow every year. Um, we're busy getting them signed up as well. Um, and we'll keep up with potholes and and work orders. Um, I do have one announcement. On the twentieth, um, we're going to be closing uh Bogey Neck Road at about thirteen forty-five. That's just below Pine Crest Drive, um, towards the end of state maintenance. Uh, there's a tree that we're coordinating with Dominion Power on to remove that's in danger of falling across the power lines and the road. Um, they have to bring in some special equipment um to reach the tree from Virginia Beach and we plan to do that on the twentieth. Um, so we're going to put some flyers in the mailboxes um down there to notify those residents. I'm going to coordinate with uh county administrator, try to get the word out on that.
What time is that?
Uh, uh, they're planning to do the work from nine to two thirty on November twentieth.
Okay, it's after the school buses go through, okay.
And if emergency vehicles need to get through, we can get the, you know, the truck and move the outriggers on the equipment to get them by. Uh, it would just be a couple of minutes. Um, uh, so we'll coordinate with dispatch to make sure uh we get advanced notice on on that if we need to. Um, the plant mix schedule is complete. Um, so all the paving work is done in the county. Um, secondary six-year plan, I'm meeting with the homeowners there on Forest Green uh next week uh to work on easements. And then I'll, once we get those easements in place, I'll come back to the board for a resolution um to bring that road into the system so we can start work on it. Um, and the last, last thing I have for you tonight is a kind of bittersweet. Um, Carter White has worked in the residency uh for twenty-eight of his thirty-year career. Uh, he's been in the, the, what was the Warsaw residency, now the Northern Neck residency. He retires effective December first. Um, so we're recruiting a new assistant resident engineer and hope to have them in place very soon, but um, Carter lives in Warsaw, said he won't be too far, but um, and I, I told him I reserve the right to call him every time I have a question. But he does retire, well deserved and well earned, uh, retires December first. That's all I have for you all. If you have anything for me, I'm happy to take care of this.
City, about you, I have any, uh, any questions?
Yeah, I have seven. Um. So how are you going to contact the citizens down at Boogernut? You know, get it in the paper, radio and everything?
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna um take flyers and put on their mailbox, a piece of paper on their mailbox um to try to touch each one personally. And then we're also going to use social media and uh it'll also be advertised with our regular uh our work schedule.
Yes, uh, we have most of the elderly people down in that area, so um I know as far as uh computers and all that, you know, so flyers are good. The contact, another, what uh progress have you made on the uh traffic coming down the school lane? You know, we asked you to check, see what you could do?
Yeah, talk to the traffic engineering section. Um, you know, one idea they had was a roundabout, another one was a continuous uh green tea, uh, which be easier to show you if I had a picture. Um, but I guess the bottom line is whatever we decided, we need to figure out how we're going to fund it. And I'm, I, I can't fund it with maintenance dollars and it's not going to score well on smart scale. Um, so really the only option is revenue sharing, which would require a fifty percent county match. So if that's something you want to, you know, further conversations along, I think we could uh revenue sharing, uh those applications are every other year. Um, so we can, we can uh you know, kind of schedule some meetings leading up to the application window for that program to figure out what it is we want to do, but there would need to be a significant funding commitment from the county to do an improvement there.
Well, you know, if you have to meet with us or whatever, likely you to do all you can.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good, Miss Long?
Yes.
Mr. Fisher, you got anything?
No.
Any county staff have any? Mr. Beal, sorry to hear um bit of passing on and to beat out workers.
Thank you.
He's, he's going to be missed.
Very much so.
Thank you for being here tonight.
It was a uh I think, I think that's what makes the Northern Exa special is the community support. And I appreciate it seeing that, that the funeral.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, um, we have a resolution for Veterans Day, Mr. Basin.
Whereas Veterans Day was established to commemorate the end of World War One, which occurred on the eleventh hour of the eleventh day of the eleventh month in nineteen eighteen. And whereas the service and sacrifice of America's veterans have been crucial in protecting the freedoms of the United States, and whereas the citizens of Northumberland County are deeply grateful for the sacrifices made by our veterans who have defended the liberties we cherish and preserved security of our nation, and whereas the families of our veterans have also borne great burdens, it's shown steadfast support contributing immeasurably to the strength and resilience of our military community. And whereas Veterans Day observed each year on November eleventh provides asylum and fitting opportunity to recognize honor and express our deepest appreciation to all veterans. Now therefore be it resolved that the Northumberland County Board of Supervisors hereby honors and recognizes all United States veterans for their noble service and sacrifice on behalf of our country.
All right, what's the pleasure to the board?
Motion to approve the resolution.
Second. Second, right? We have a resolution for Mr. George Irving Buddy Scholar. His hundredth birthday, Mr. Basin.
Whereas Mr. George Irving Scholar also referred to as Buddy Scholar reached the one hundredth anniversary of his birth this year on May twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-five. And whereas Northumberland County recognizes Mr. Scholar's birthday in the month of November as he was a loyal uh as a local World War Two hero from Ophelia, Virginia. And whereas Mr. Scholar served four years in the United States Army, an army engineer serving in the Pacific Theater, Solomon Island, New Guinea, Philippines and Japan. Whereas Mr. Scholar is honored for his courage, dedication and sacrifices made with great personal cost. And whereas now the, now therefore it be resolved that the Northumberland County Board of Supervisors hereby proclaims May twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-five is Mr. George Irving Scholar Day in Northumberland County, Virginia. And be it further resolved that the Northumberland County Board of Supervisors hereby honors and recognizes Mr. George Irving Scholar for his service and sacrifice, and which is him a very happy birthday.
All right, before we get a motion on that one, let's go back and vote on the purple, please. Thank you, Jim. I will provide a lot of entertainment tonight, folks. All in favor, say aye. Anyone disapprove? Nope. All right, may have a motion for the second.
Motion to approve.
All right, second, second. All in favor, say aye.
Jimmy, I think Mrs. Kim Schmidt is here to accept this resolution on behalf of Mr. Scholar.
Okay.
She wants to come forward with it.
You can feel free to, we don't, we need to get a signature on that.
Congratulations.
I very much appreciate this from the board supervisors. We truly listen, we'll look to hear a five proposed land needs in first wave. One of those, he was, um, he was at the helm, his entire crew, his boat, his entire crew that shot off. Everyone was still except him. He got blown to the beach. They revived him a few days later. He was on another landing craft and landed here. Five proposed landings under heavy fire and a lot else, I serve as rapper. So thank you.
All right. Now we have a presentation from uh Davenport, you know, RFP update.
See, uh, Mr. Uh, Mr. Chair, members of the board, nice to see you this evening as as always, do we have it on the screen or?
I think uh he should.
Okay, got it. We've got some hard copies as well as. Really here again, Kyle Alex of Davenport, uh, county's financial advisor. Um, and here this evening with an update um and really probably a finalization of this process that we started this summer in terms of thinking about a couple of different things, most notably making sure that we're doing everything we can to uh maintain and maximize the liquidity, the cash in the bank or the county. And so uh we have a presentation this evening. We've gone through a process that will walk you through, um, and certainly answer any questions that uh any member of the board has. Uh, but I think if we go to the first page there in terms of background, um, again, in terms of our role here as the county's financial advisor, um, you know, sort of thinking through these various strategies of how do we maintain, how do we maximize? How do we make sure there is cash in the bank, so to speak, in terms of the county? And that's something we've talked about through the summertime and now it is uh the fall somehow quickly. Um, we've worked through a variety of things to that regard. Uh, you may recall also in the summertime, uh, we borrowed what's called a revenue anticipation note, that five million dollars on a fixed rate basis, um, what that revenue anticipation note did or does is make sure we have ample cash flow uh to make it through the lower time periods in terms of cash in the county. You as a county collect taxes once a year, that was obviously very recently. And so that revenue anticipation note was really in place to make sure that those months leading up to tax collection day, there was sufficient cash flow. Um, we note that at the bottom of the page there, that five million dollars is due at the end of December. And so all of this comes together in terms of an overall plan whereby that RAN or revenue anticipation note will come due at the end of December. So we're here this evening um with some other financing that will help to take out and uh permanently finance some of those revenue anticipation note dollars. Uh, before we get there on page number two, just again, a little bit of background. And this is something we've shared over the last several months and really last couple of years with the board. Uh, so nothing particularly new here, but a little bit of helpful background. So this is a graph of our unassigned fund balance in the county. And so this is measured at June thirty of every year when the fiscal year ends. Um, reported in the audit by your auditors, which is not us, Davenport, but your independent auditors. And what we see is that trend whereby in twenty sixteen uh we were at a relative low point in terms of dollars. We needed to issue one of these RANs. Uh, those dollars in the unassigned fund balance grew through twenty twenty-three, and then we've seen and talked about that decline in twenty-four. And then for the moment, twenty-five, as far as we know, is still an estimate as the audit's being finalized. And so that's the best information we have. But the point here is that we really are at a point that is lower than we'd like to be, than we need to be in terms of unassigned fund balance. And so part of what we'll talk about tonight will help that, won't totally solve it. But part of what we'll talk about tonight will certainly help enhance that unassigned fund balance and get us moving back towards a position that's going to be stronger in the future. Uh, on the next page, this graph looks very similar, but it's technically a little different. This is equating those unassigned, unassigned fund balance dollars to the size of our budget in the county. So this is what we call unassigned fund balance as a percent of expenditures. And what you'll see in that graph is a similar shape. Uh, but what's important is we compared twenty sixteen, we had about three million unassigned fund balance to twenty twenty-five. That three million dollars equates to a much lower percentage of the budget than it did roughly ten years ago. And so that makes intuitive sense with inflation and everything else, the size of the budget has grown. And so we need more dollars to get to the same place in terms of as a percent of the budget itself. Um, you may recall on the board and we've talked about and continue to recommend that we put in place an unassigned fund balance policy. That's something we'll be working with staff to get in place likely in the early part of the calendar year as part of the budget process. Um, we think that's going to be very, very important going forward. Um, what we're really here to talk about tonight is getting a couple financing processes in place definitively, so we can start to move that far right-hand light green bar higher up. Um, so yeah, just a little bit of background, uh, nothing really new on these pages, but hopefully helps set the stage. Um, on page four. So what we've done since that closing of the revenue anticipation note is we've gone out and we've done a competitive bidding for long-term financing. So that revenue anticipation note is very, very short-term, literally just a couple of months to make sure we make it through those low cash flow time periods. At the same time, you recall, we talked about going out and getting long-term financing. So we start to get out of this mode of needing short-term, um, you know, sort of cash flow dollars and get ourselves into a more predictable fixed interest rate mode that can be built into the budget over multiple years. Um, and so that's really what we've done over the last several months. Um, that takes the form of two different financings. And so you'll see in the middle bullet point there, there's a twenty twenty-five A and a twenty twenty-five B financing. Um, the twenty twenty-five A is what we call tax exempt. The reason for that is those are new capital projects. Um, those are things you've identified as a board within your budget. That twenty twenty-five A will fund those new capital projects. Those include things like uh the equipment for the electoral board, things that uh if we had the cash in the bank, maybe we would pay cash for, but we're not in that position right now. So we're able to finance that um to make sure that we can move forward to those projects as a county, but not further erode the cash and the savings. The other piece of this is we call the twenty twenty-five B financing. That's about two point four million dollars. What that twenty twenty-five B will do is to basically pay ourselves back for projects of a capital nature that we as a county paid for with cash going all the way back to twenty twenty or twenty twenty-one. And so what we're really doing with this twenty twenty-five B is just go ahead and reimburse ourself. Um, there are projects that we could have financed and given the, you know, trajectory of the cash over the last year or thereabouts. Um, sort of taking that option now to go say, you know what? Let's go ahead and get those dollars back in, reimburse ourselves, start to move that savings level back up and allow ourselves via financing to pay for this over time, spread the cost over time for these capital projects that have a longer useful life. It's a concept we call generational equity whereby we're able to take the cost of investments that are made um and spread them over time via fixed interest rate. So really two different financings that we've uh sort of worked through in a competitive basis over the last several months. Um, on the next page, just to give you a sense of where interest rates are, um, this is very broad brush, but just to kind of paint a picture. Um, this is a, what we call tax exempt twenty bond index, what this is really showing is is on a historical basis to borrow on a tax exempt uh basis, rates are in a very favorable position. And so that's what we're showing here, they're not at the all-time lows of twenty twenty. Um, but over that forty-year perspective that we show in the graph here, uh, historically very favorable. On the next page. Uh, the next page here shows um what we call the Virginia SNAP program. It's a state program that um is specific to local governments and allows you to reinvest some of these borrowed proceeds and earn interest on them. So uh, an important concept here, what we're talking about is between both the As, meaning twenty twenty-five A and twenty twenty-five B. As we borrow those dollars, we're going to be able to earn interest on them. We're about to earn interest at about four percent right now in terms of that interest rate. So that helps to offset some of the cost of the borrowing. It helps to offset some of the uh pressures on expenditures. And I think that's an important point to make as we look at the overall financing process, part of the reason we want to make sure we get cash back into the county, back into the bank is because we are able to earn interest via these various state programs at about four percent right now. Um, on page seven, so I've mentioned this, we've gone through what we call competitive bidding process. And so um we put a competitive RFP out to local banks, national banks, regional banks. Uh, they were all given the same uh sort of shot at it in terms of information. Um, and the bids we've gotten back, you see at the bottom of the page here, um, two different banks put a bid in. Uh, one highlighted in green is Webster Bank and the other, um, item number two down there is Capital One. Um, Webster Bank may not be a household name um in this area, but they're very, very active um and reliable in terms of lending to local governments. Um, we see them a fair amount in terms of when this competitive process come through with aggressive interest rates and we're very used to working with it. Makes no difference to us who the lender is. Um, but as you look at the various terms on the page here, we've highlighted Webster because it is the lowest interest rates. And so they've given us a tax exempt interest rate of four forty-five and a taxable interest rate of five seventy-five. You compare that to Capital One, Capital One's very solid bid, but it is higher in terms of the interest rates. Capital One's a four fifty-seven and a six oh three. Importantly, these interest rates are fixed. So these are fixed for the full term of a twenty-year loan. And so again, we're moving from a position of having to borrow on a short-term basis with these RANs whereby we're having to do those on a very short-term basis. They need to be paid off at the end of a year. Um, and moving into something where we're able to lock in a known interest rate and spread that cost, much like a mortgage, whereby we're making incremental annual payments of principal and interest that'll get built into the budget. The second key provision we've highlighted on the page here is the prepayment side of things. We think that's very important um in terms of the county's ability to prepay or refinance, pay things a little bit earlier. Webster Bank provides that ability. Uh, we basically would have from now until November of twenty thirty, so about five years or thereabouts, four years, um, whereby we would not be able to prepay. And so we'll probably be building our fund balance up over that time period. At that point then, um, we will be able to prepay with a descending uh premium or penalty starting in uh twenty thirty. And so we've got some good flexibility there while again, we're sort of rebuilding the cash. Um, we like that and importantly, it is a fixed interest rate for the full-time period. Um, and we know that. Uh, we'll flip to page. Uh, just to kind of give you a sense in terms of a comparison, um, again, how many dollars is different is Webster Bank versus Capital One. This is just a comparison of the payments, uh, aggregating, meaning adding together the two loans there. Um, and Webster Bank is lower by about a hundred thousand dollars in the aggregate over that lifetime. And so clearly the more cost-effective of the two. And Webster actually has a better prepayment, more flexible prepayment provision uh than Capital One. So that is our, our recommendation to the board in terms of moving forward. We'll go to the next page on page nine, just a little bit of rationale. Um, again, why do we recommend uh the Webster Bank proposals? Um, lowest interest rate, so that's pretty simple. Um, prepayment flexibility, it is a fixed interest rate for life alone. And so I think that's also a very important point. Um, it is lower than everything we used in the planning. So if you go back to what we were running and talking about in the August time period, we're assuming rates that were higher than what is talked about here on purpose in order to be conservative. And so what has come in is better than that. And so that is a good thing. Um, note at the bottom of the page, uh, Webster's proposal is still subject to final credit approval. Um, so we have a little bit of a process to work through with them. We've had a bunch of initial discussions. We're not particularly concerned at this moment, but technically it is still subject to final credit approval and a variety of, of kind of legal logistics that we'll need to work through with the county attorney um and bond counsel. Page ten, just in terms of next steps. Um, this evening, um, we have a resolution prepared by your bond counsel. Um, Chris Culp at Hunter Andrews Kirk, who I believe is on the, the phone. Um, and also obviously with the review of of Mr. Gregory in terms of county attorney. Um, this evening would be the only uh final approval we need of the board of supervisors. Um, you'll notice that second line item there, um, the structure of this is called a lease revenue bond. And so that's very typical for counties across Virginia, all your neighbors uh across the state have the same kind of structures. What we need to do is we're leasing basically collateral. Um, a couple of county facilities to serve as the, the security for the loan. What that requires, just by virtue of the way the, the state laws set up, is that we use a conduit issuer. Um, in most counties, there is an EDA or an IDA. Um, we in Northumberland don't have our own EDA, uh, so we're looking next door to our neighbors in Westmoreland um to serve in that role. We've had some initial discussions with them. County administrator and their folks have said they're uh certainly willing to help in that regard. We're still working to schedule some things and work out some details. Uh, but we would expect that Westmoreland would serve in that conduit role. That doesn't mean this is Westmoreland's debt. This is Northumberland County's project. They serve purely as a legal conduit, uh, which again is a very typical um structure in Virginia and really in other instances across the country. Uh, so pending that final um action uh that we hope to have happen probably in late November, early December, we'd close on the loan um and have funds in hand by December seventeenth. Um, that's important because that five million dollar RAN comes due about a week later. So part of the timing of all of this fits together whereby as that five million dollar RAN comes due, we want to make sure we've got these dollars closed and in the bank to the extent we need some of those dollars to help make sure that that RAN payoff can happen towards the end of December, which is basically a week after closing. Um, so with that, Mr. Chair, um, the county administrator, county attorney, anything else? Um, any questions? Certainly there's a lot of information there, but I'll pause, see if there's any questions that you have.
Is there a cost to using the EDA through Westmoreland County? I'm assuming that.
I think there will be. I think it'll be pretty nominal. There typically is, EDAs are allowed to charge, um, and you see it in a lot of instances in administrative fee. Um, that's usually charged in the case of a private entity or a not-for-profit or somebody going through. Um, I expect there will be one here. We've budgeted for one. I think it'll be relatively nominal. I expect there will be one here, we've budgeted for one, I think it'll be relatively nominal.
We'd use that service through Westmoreland County prior to this, right?
That's what we have.
I believe I heard you correct, the next step would be the approval of the resolution.
That's correct, yes sir.
Anyone else have any? Any questions? County staff have any questions?
Yes, sir, I appreciate Davenport's and Chris Culp's assistance and Eric Gregory's assistance in trying to pull all this together.
What's your timeline on, we need to have any discussion on the resolution or we can sit on it for a bit?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chris Culp, bond counsel is on the phone and can't answer any questions. But the resolution is in your packet, all the other associated documents are in your packet. Resolution has been reviewed and is recommended for approval tonight.
It's a pleasure to the board, but you approved the resolution tonight, we want to look it over. And bringing the ventilator day. What, what do you feel, Dadlock, would it benefit with your suggestion on this?
I think some of the financing that we are looking at and the electoral board is following Davenport. They do have some equipment that is in need of replacement. So this financing does cover some of their request of what they are looking for. Some other things that this financing does cover as far as future needs. We were looking at the school well. We've got to do something for the gas pumps over to the impound lot. And we are also looking at some modifications or upgrades for HVAC systems for this building. So that's just some of the new monies that we're, we're looking at. And as far as some of the older monies that were referenced. A lot of that kind of the same situation, not exactly, but back in 2016, what we saw was that instead of borrowing monies for the new sheriff's office, the county went on and paid for that out of pocket. And so that's why you saw that dip in 2015, 2016 timeframe. So some of the items that we went back and worked with Davenport on was to identify the capital projects that we've paid for out of pocket over the last four or five years and to try and get those monies back into the, into the general fund.
It's a pleasure to the board.
I'd make the motion that we move forward with the proposal.
Second.
So. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You want to pose? You thought I was going to forget that again, did you? All right. Thank you, sir.
Appreciate it.
Good presentation.
All right, at this time, we're going to have the electoral board come up, discussion on capital improvement requests for voting equipment.
Good evening, thank you all for letting us speak tonight. I think our presentation is a little bit different than we thought coming in. We thank you all very much for the 2025 A financing that it sounds like will allow us to move forward with the purchase of the replacement electoral, election equipment. I was going to summarize some of the challenges that we had over the last year, the primary and this most recent November election. We did have some equipment failures, we had printers that failed and we had a couple of scanners that failed and they failed in the presence of voters. Our election officers in the precincts were able to troubleshoot some things that allowed us to have a successful election. I'm very pleased to say that we have finished our canvas and we are working on the abstracts that go to the Commonwealth of Virginia. We worked on those today and put our seals on them and they're soon ready to go. We need a little bit of information back from the Commonwealth. But that 2025 A financing that you all mentioned, sounds as though it will allow us to proceed. So we welcome that, we have, and we have a proposal in place. So as soon as you all are to the point where the money is ready, that December 17 closing date. We will be able to sign that proposal that we have from Hart Inter-Civic, which is our vendor. So I'd like to just say that we really appreciate the focus that you all have had on this. This is a very visible set of things that we do here in the county. Austin can speak to that in a, in a minute, very visible in front of voters. And we are just thrilled to be able to move forward seemingly with new equipment. Austin?
Now folks, yeah, Austin Schmidt here from, I'm the vice chairman of the county electoral board. And I think I've been doing this about six years now. And over the course of the six years, we have noticed that, that the machines are becoming less reliable, the older they get. And there are new security requirements that are going to come into effect from the federal level, which of course will trickle down to the state and from the state down to us. And we're going to have to make sure that the new machines, replacement machines will comply with these new federal and, and state regulations. So now is the time to get in on, on the ground floor because the, the vendors are, are willing to make a little bit of a deal. And that will benefit us greatly. So thank you so very much for considering our plea for, for assistance in this department. Because all these folks sitting out here in the audience, they're the voters and they don't like to see things fail from voting day. It, it gives them cause for concern. So thank you very much.
Austin, I have a question for you, sir.
Yeah.
First of all, thank both of you for what you do. Thank you very much. What happens to the old machines? Do they have any value?
No, no, absolutely not. Yeah, and it's old technology. So, you know, we, we can't, we can't send it over to the high school and get them refurbished or something like that, like we did the computers. But unfortunately, that's just the way it is. Like I said, we'll have new security requirements coming down from above and these, these old machines. In fact, the, the batteries in, in, you know, the little display screen that everybody sees here with the American flag pops up. They don't even recharge the battery, these things are so old. That it's just, that's the way they were built when they were built. And so hopefully the new ones will, so that if we get embarrassed by a power outage, we can run the machines for a little longer. So it is what it is.
It is what it is. Thank you.
Anybody else have any question?
So time allows for us to potentially take care of this for you at our next regular board meeting, is that correct?
Well, next election, we're hoping to have a, we'll have a, let me see, next, next June will be the next round of voting. But it will start in April.
So we have a time, we've been working with the vendor to understand what the timeframe is. Once we are able to, to commit to a proposal with them. I believe that if we, if the funding is in place, December 17, that, that closing day. I believe we can make it work so that the election equipment will be in place. We'll all be trained by the June primary, we expect the June 26th primary. So thank you.
Just thank everyone for working the poles and making everything happen.
We had about 6,900 voters, we have about close to 11,000 registered in the county. So we had about 69, 70% turnout and of that, about 3,100 was early. So that 45 days that we just enjoyed so much. We had about 3,100 voters come to the register office and the balance was at the 13 on the floor. So we appreciate, and we have several electoral officers here and we appreciate them very.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our system is good here, just so everybody knows, please don't mess around.
Thank you.
Hey, up next, we have a presentation from Waste Management.
Good afternoon, actually I do not have a presentation, I'm just here at your request as a board. So I'm here to answer any questions that you all might, might have about the convenience center.
I got one.
Okay.
Why do we have so much difficulty in keeping these sites clean? I understand we're dealing with garbage.
Right.
But some of the reports that I get, photos that I get, and when I go myself. It's no reason for these sites to be kept the way they're kept. It's, it right now in Lottsburg, it's a water hose, it's throwing it on the ground. It's been there for over two weeks that no one's bothered to even roll up.
Got you. I was unaware of the water hose, but a lot of the, and I'm not blaming them, but we're, we're starting to have a lot of buzzard issues that they come in over the evenings and stuff and they pull a lot of trash out. So it takes a lot of time to get it cleaned up and it's been a little windy. But I mean, we work. We'll try.
You know, the, the place needs to be washed down. It, it's, I've got people that won't even go to Lottsburg anymore because of the mess.
Can I ask what, exactly what it is you want washed? Cause I've been there twice to look to see what.
Well, the, the compactor was really nasty a couple of weeks ago. The cement pad was nasty.
The, the only, the blacktop, those are all stains from vehicles, pressure washings.
Right, but I'm talking about the cement pads. Understand the blacktop, but I get a bunch of complaints and it's always seems to be on weekends.
Yeah.
And, you know. We, we pay for a service and I believe the citizens want a good service. And they're very, they're very disappointed because like I said, I get a lot of complaints on a lot, especially on the Lottsburg site. And we get a lot of compliments on the sites that are in, in the one in Newland and the Indian field. And they're not in that county, but everyone references those two sites and compares them to the ones in Northumberland. And hands down, the ones in Richmond County are cleaner.
And we've hired some newer attendants that we're moving around and it's definitely seems to have been helping. I am, I would guess to say if you went to Lottsburg right now, it'd be real nice. So.
Okay, and I guess with the holidays coming up, what's your game plan for Thanksgiving and Christmas? Cause we seem to get backed up.
The Thanksgiving and Christmas, we were closed both those days. I believe Christmas Eve, we closed at five, or two, one or the other, I can't remember. One county is one or one's the other, I can't remember which one it is.
Yeah, typically we've done earlier at five o'clock.
Okay.
We need to make sure we get that information to paper, get it on the radio, to let people know those, those times and dates. Very important.
So you're familiar with the sticker system that the county's just implemented, right?
Right.
What, how are you, how are you, what's the plan of action? How are you going to handle someone that comes in without the sticker? I'm asking because I don't know.
That's kind of up to the county as to, I mean, we can tell them they can't dump there. But we can't physically keep them from dumping them. You know, we could, I was going to suggest, you know, if you all would like, we could take down license numbers and things like that.
We, we had some discussion, Lottor and myself and Mr. Gregory, this past weeks, several hours on this subject. We're working it, but we've got some discussion on that and how to take care of it. We'll, we'll, we'll go through that at a later time. I would like to ask one thing about your attendants, people who work there. If they would consider perhaps Northumberland is fast becoming a retirement community. And you can look around this room tonight and see what I'm talking about. And especially with old people trying to get their garbage out of their vehicles and having trouble getting it up over the ministers. I would like to see a little bit more consideration by the attendants. I'm talking with the ones that are sitting in there watching the TV set.
Yeah.
While these people drive up and fight with trying to get the garbage in. People like ourselves, we don't have, we, we can take care of it. But like I said, we are getting a lot of older people in this county. And the need is greater than it's ever been for assistance at these recycling places and, and the, especially the dumpster itself.
Yeah, historically in the past, you know, if someone requires assistance, we ask the TV to horn or something like that and let us know. Or even to ask us.
Yeah.
And, and we're usually more than happy to help.
Yeah, a little more emphasis on it would be greatly appreciated.
Okay, I'll put it out there.
Any further questions? Dadlock, you got any questions?
No, as Mr. Fisher said, county attorney and Mr. Fisher and I had a meeting actually yesterday. And I'll be following up with you on, on several things.
Sounds good.
All right, thank you for being here.
Thanks for having me.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, up next, we have an update from the Northumberland County Public Schools.
Good evening. Good evening, I have just a couple of, I am not that tall. All right, I have just a couple of brief updates for today. First and foremost, I just wanted to announce yet again that in November on the 24th through the 28th, schools will be closed for that November break. But let me start off actually on a really good thing, which is I got the opportunity today to go down to the elementary school where they were having their Thanksgiving lunch. And I really just want to do a shout out to the amount of community members that came out, parents, grandparents, friends, aunts, uncles. You got the true sense of community today if you were able to go over to that lunch. And having come from a bigger city, it was really wonderful to be able to see how many people came out for that event today. So I really just wanted to do that shout out as well, it really was wonderful. And the food smelled delicious, by the way, unfortunately I had already eaten. The second point I just wanted to get through this evening was transportation. Last time we were here, we had requested the release of some capital funds that had been tagged for the engine. We just wanted to follow up and say thank you, we are working on moving that forward. I do have some other good financial news that's not from the finance department. But Ms. Ashton, the assistant superintendent, and I've been working very hard and looking at old reimbursement that were maybe neglected to be made in a timely fashion. And we were able to uncover at least a few. So right now, we have $94,012 and I can't see what the glass is on and five cents. As long as it is approved by VDOE, which we anticipate it will, it will be returned to the county when it comes back. So that is a good thing. And that was from some grants that were dated 2021, though you had several years to spend them, the reimbursements had not been filed and we were able to get those through. So we're excited to bring you that news today. The only other updates that I really have, which we discussed briefly in the school board meeting, is we understand that the capital improvement proposals are due this Friday. Just wanted to broach the board or apprise the board that there are three areas that we will submit. We did submit a lot of our documents. So we will be looking at developing, or we did develop, I should say, a five year plan for bus replacement for our aging fleet. We've been here a couple of times to talk about the situation with the buses. So that is something that we're working on. We do have a proposal for the playground at NES and that is a phased proposal that looks at rolling out that project over several years in order to mitigate that cost and be able to get some playground equipment out there sooner rather than later and then build upon what we started. And then the third plan that we are putting in is for a well replacement, but not the well replacement from 2026 because we'll cross that bridge again nine years from now. But at that point, we will not have a secondary well that we can rely on. So we're trying to look at a plan that would look at earmarking funds each year over the next nine years, five in this capital improvement plan to make sure that when that time comes, nine years from now, we have the, the funds set aside to be able to do that project. So that's where we are on that. Those are all the items I have, if you have any questions. And then I did have one thing to follow up at the end. Mr. Wayne?
Yes, when are the school closing for the holidays?
Sure, so they're closed the last week of November, so that's Monday, November 24th. Sure. So they're closed the last week of November. So that's Monday, November 24th through Friday, November 28th. So they are closed for the entire week this year.
Right. Anything else, Mr. Long?
No.
Well, I did attend the Thanksgiving lunch today. It was very good. I got four. And a lot of happy kids, happy family members, but it was also a lot of hardworking school staff making it happen. So thank you guys. Yeah, staff got any question? Okay, that's all I got.
I did have one other thing, if I could be so inclined. I did write a statement briefly that I wanted to cover, which is from myself as division leadership regarding some of the information that transpired in the last Board of Supervisors meeting. If I could read that. So I wrote, "We understand that the recent communication from the County Finance Department regarding past spending was received negatively by many of our dedicated teachers and that offense was taken regarding the manner in which the information was delivered. We want to sincerely acknowledge the frustration and anger that that caused. The County Finance Team has offered to meet with any staff and all staff during their office hours to address any lingering concerns. Additionally, we as school leadership meet regularly with the County Finance Team to collaborate on addressing current and future spending issues to ensure students' needs are being met. While our priority right now is to work on repairing the relationship and implementing better processes, we must also be prepared for the future. It is likely that further detailed financial information and changes will be communicated in the coming months. We are committed to making these future communications transparent and collaborative. We are working very hard to get the finance situation fixed and rebuild trust. The School Division and the County Finance Department have the same goal. We want to get things fixed. We are all need to work together to get the message out that Northumberland County Public Schools is moving forward together." I appreciate you letting me go into that statement.
Thank you. Thank you, Ford.
So Dr. Pika and I are here to go through a couple of slides. There's not very many, but then Dr. Pika is going to go through the detailed financials. So we can go to the next slide, please. So we'd like to go through good news. And then what's in process, and then I'll turn it over to Dr. Pika to review the financial statement. Next slide. All right, good news. So accounts payable backlog is down to less than one inch. We started eight inches and that the team has been working very diligently to get the backlog cut down. So we're almost there. And then we're on track with our monthly payroll and withholding updates. And then we are continuing with our controlled spending, which is a spending slowdown. We think that's going to go through until January and we're focusing on what we call nine one one or emergency needs. On top of that, when we have emergency needs, for example, our Visa cards got cut off last week or the week before. And so we had to have some creative ways to support the high school and the middle school book fair. And so we did come up with some creative support techniques and were able to get through the book fair and I think it was the high school had a refreshment in the concession stand. We were able to support them. Now, what's come out today is surveys. We've created new surveys for faculty and staff and the community, and they're two separate surveys. So I know that the community survey was released today. I believe the survey for teachers and other faculty and staff members has also been released. They're due back by December 5th. They are a little bit more detailed than when you've had in the past, but we expect to take the information and make informed decisions about the budgeting process with that information. So please fill out your survey. We started the budgeting process. We've met with one division. Well, it was actually the superintendent's office and started working through the budget process. And Dr. Pika will go through that in more detail. And then I wanted to share some more good news. Ms. Hamlet, who is our Director for School Nutrition and the Cafeteria Program, she's working together to develop some cooperative buying and local buying agreements. And she's already come up with one vendor, is a local farmer who's going to provide lettuce to the schools. And I think that's just the way we should go. We should look here first and support our local farmers and businesses. And then bank reconciliations that were outstanding since November of 2024. We've got two done, November and December of 2024, and we're continuing on with the 25, starting with January. And I want to thank Superintendent Leslie and Deputy Superintendent Ashton for their work on developing grants. And I just want to put a plug in. If anyone in the community wants to volunteer to be a grant writer, we would certainly support that. There are a lot of grants out there that schools can use and we could use your help. And finally, we're in a position, this would be good to the, the Board of Supervisors, we're starting to get into a position of paying back the county for some of the funds that we've borrowed in the past. So we're recommending putting those funds in reserve for perhaps some of the school capital improvement plans. So I hope you will think about that. And next slide, what's in process? So what's coming up? We're doing some I-9 updates. We've found that our I-9s were not as complete. And we've done a internal audit of those and we're working with Ms. Lee, our HR Director, and she is getting those all up to date and in the right folders. And now we're going to work on W-9s for vendors, get prepared for tax season. And then we're developing procedures for the school activity funds. I want to thank the school finance teams for being so open and kind and understanding that as we come in and try to understand how they're doing the school activity funds. And then doing procurement process, rules and regulations, and then moving on to the contracting type of process. We're also working with Ms. Rogers on some key special education reports and medical reimbursement processes that developed. It is very arduous. We're trying to support her and working with Mr. Tedlock on the county audit. And then Ms. Smith, we're working to support her on her title programs reimbursement process. And so it's been, it's hard. Every day is hard, but it's been also fulfilling, you know, satisfying so that we really appreciate everybody pulling together and supporting us as we get to know the process. So I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Pika. Thank you.
So in the vein of good news, not only is the stack of overdue invoices less than an inch, I'm under 10. And so from the standpoint of where this started on September 21st to where we are today, less than two months, we've been able to work through that backlog. Just this week, we made over $200,000 in payments. That includes some local vendors who had been waiting some time and who had basically cut off the school for services because we hadn't paid the bills in so long. And that's what actually happened with the Visa bill. So we're very excited that we're at a process now where we've gotten that. We're actually paying current bills. So now the new accounts payable person is actually able to focus on current bills while I'm still getting some, some backlog. As we've worked through these processes, there are some new things that have surfaced. So for example, we're finding people getting paid out of the wrong accounts. And in order to make sure that we don't have any disruption in pay, we're working furiously to make sure that that is corrected, if you will, to make sure that those funds don't run dry. What we did provide for this board meeting was, Mr. Fisher, I simplified the reports. So there's a check register that's labeled check register this time. And there's also the electronic payments register. You're going to see quite a few ruined checks. We had to go through a process where we changed a little bit how the system works. Because it was pumping out voided checks every time you had more than one line on a check. So we've been able to change that. That should help us save some money. So you'll see both the check register and the electronic payments revenue. I'm super excited, as Ann had mentioned, that we're now able to turn our attention to the revenue. So we had a meeting today with the County Treasurer and we said, what's the process for returning money? This is frankly, I don't know. So this is a new process for us to learn. We're going to be meeting with Mr. Tedlock's office on Monday to figure it out. Some of the funds that are going to be returned to the county in the form of reimbursements will have to be used to pay some of the 2025 bills. As we've completed the drawdown, if you will, of the backlog of payments, there were some more 20 older bills that we found. And the result of this is we cannot complete the 25-year and file any state reports until we have not only the 2025 bills paid, but in going through the system, we also found revenue that has been booked, four months worth of revenue that was booked in the wrong year. So we now have to go back and correct that so that that revenue is attributed to the appropriate year. And I don't know what that does to the revenue statement for this year. So that is something that we have to continue to work through. We are also working with Mr. Cost. One of the things that we've asked him to do is take a look at the forensic audit report and identify some objective criteria that can be used to assess the school. So what we'll be doing is a scorecard of where we are in addressing those audit recommendations so that we can instill some more confidence in some of the processes that we've changed. You guys have a copy of the risk and mitigation strategies. Real quick, I'll just let you know that cleaning up some of these expense assignments is actually starting to risk. How can I say this? I, I think there's probably one or two accounts already that are, have spent all their money for the year. And we have got to make sure we stay on top of that. When I get to the, not the supplemental appropriation, but the advanced appropriation, I'll explain a little bit. But I have at least one account, I think, if not two, that all the spending is gone for the entire year. But we have to make sure we stay on top of that so we don't continue to spend out of those accounts without moving the money appropriately. So that is one of the risks of having some of this backlog of expenses. And what we're doing because of the spending slowdown, we're continuing to individually analyze every purchase order that comes across the desk to make sure that we have the funds available. I'm happy to say that there has not been anything that has been essential that was brought to us that has been denied. The process is taking sometimes a little bit longer than people would like because we have to make sure that the funds are there. But there has been nothing that was given to us to ask for purchases that is essential instructional materials that has been denied. There is also the delay in analyzing and assigning the revenue may have some impact in terms of some of those lines. We're, we're getting on top of that because we're depositing the checks now as they come in. And we're starting to work through the assignment of the revenue that has come into the county. So I think that is, again, I really feel that we've turned a corner because we're, the backlog is now gone. We're able to stay current with payments. Every day is a new learning opportunity. So every time I think there's something that maybe we've gotten our hands around, we get a new challenge presented to us, but nothing is insurmountable. So that's the great news. So I'll stop there for questions before I go into, you guys only have to pay attention to the front page of this, but I'll go into the back page of the special, the moving of the funds. So any questions for either Ann or I, anything we've shared so far?
I have one from Miss Curran. When is the, so the survey is going to be distributed tomorrow? How is it being distributed?
There's a couple mechanisms with the faculty and staff. It is on email. And then with the community, it's posted on the website.
And what I'll add to that for the budget, thank you, Ann, I forgot. So what we're doing with the budget today, we met with the superintendent and the deputy superintendent on that particular section, the administration section of the budget. What we're going to be doing, we're doing a three-year retrospective. So what will happen is every account line is being reviewed three years prior for what was budgeted and what was actually expended and the details on how those funds were expended. Those documents are going to be made public on the school's website. So everybody in the community will be able to see what the school got, how much they spent, and exactly where the money went. I know that those have been questions for some time. So when Dr. Leslie had mentioned that there's going to be more information coming out, there's going to be a lot more transparency. And it may or may not sit well, depending on the view that you have, but we will be completely transparent in the things that are being bought. This is in the administration category for now, but every piece of the budget is going to go through the same process.
Dr. Fisher, if I might ask, if a citizen looks at this and has questions, will they be able to call and ask about these questions? Talk to somebody about these questions?
Mr. Fisher, that's a really good question. I, I don't know how to answer that because I can't explain any of the past purchases. So we certainly will be open to talking to anyone. And if we need to have like office hours as Ann and I as the County Finance folks, if we need to have office hours where we open it up, we can. I'm not sure that we're going to be able to explain any of the past purchases. Okay. So I don't know how else.
I understand, I understand.
But we're super excited for it because part of this process is to make sure that we hear from all the division directors. They represent all the people that work for them. They're the closest to what's being bought. They're the closest to the money. So if we're misrepresenting something or it isn't there, then we need to know about that. But we're going to help with the budget process by, by doing, the data are going to speak and then we'll work with everybody else on those adjustments.
So you and the Finance Committee are, can assure us that from this day on, those questions can and will be answered.
I can, I can answer. If you have any question for us about how the money was spent in the past on what it was spent, I can give you that information.
Myself and the public in general.
Everybody.
Absolutely.
I can't always answer why, right? It wasn't there, but we can show the how and where, absolutely. Any other questions before I move to the?
These slow down or disbending. So from what I gathered, by January, that will kind of fade away.
We think so, yes. At this point, we're feeling more confident.
So as far as the process now on determining what's needed and what's not needed, how is, how is it being done?
We're asking staff to do, protect their principal, their department head, their district director.
So as they do a purchase order, they do a I call it a
Like a justification.
Justification.
We call it a nine one. But everything has a justification so that we have it in the system.
We're not in a position of saying it's not important to them. Right, they, the, the only caution that we tell people is if you buy this, you won't have money for something else later on. So each division director, each principal is responsible for saying, this is my highest priority. And if they say it's their highest priority, what you'll see on the back of this sheet is all the different financial movements that we have to do. In some cases, I have to go through five or six accounts to find the money to pay a bill. But if that's what they tell us has to be paid, then that's what we're going to pay.
And with the, as a request coming in and understand that you had the stack of invoices that had to be taken care of. So now that some of the requests that have been lingering and with that invoice stack of invoices added away, the process will speed up a little bit?
Yeah, right now, I don't think, I'm not sure that we have anything that's in the system, purchase orders that have been put in. Of the ones that have been listed as a nine one one, I don't think we have anything that hasn't been. I got one in today at four o'clock. That was originally, I think, submitted in September. We didn't have a purchase order for it. We do now, but between four o'clock and now, I couldn't, I had to go home and lock my dog. So I couldn't get that one done before today, but the process will speed up. What I don't know is if the money will be there to buy the new purchases because of all the backlog that we had. That's why it's still, we still have to analyze every single thing that comes in.
And I understand that, but I guess one of my concerns is suppose it is something that's coming in and it's part of the curriculum.
Then we, we find the money for it.
Okay.
And I'm, my assumption is that people are planning ahead and they know that it's coming. Part of the frustration, if I were a teacher, would have been some of these things have been sitting in that box for three months.
And my next question is with a lot of the, the feedback and suggestions that we got back from the forensic audit and as new processes are being implemented and we have county finance folks and the schools have county finance folks, what is the process of training them to the new way of taking care of business? I mean, is that something that is going to be done monthly? Is it going to be done every two weeks or what, what's that process going to be? Because we can have a huge breakdown of communications if something changes and it's not implemented in a way that it's understood.
So for the first part, what we've been doing is meeting with the, the finance teams in the school to share with them what's happening. And then the division directors to explain to them what the new processes. That happened from since, actually even before when UHY was there. So there are still hiccups in the process. And so when that happens, we step in and help them through the process. It doesn't mean we do it for them because otherwise it doesn't happen. So for example, with the, the new budgeting process, the way that's going to work. Next week, we're going to join Dr. Leslie's regular faculty meeting with everybody in the room. We're going to explain to them what we're doing with the budget process, how it's going to work. So they have plenty of time between now and January, when we meet with them to start thinking through what their priorities and next year are. Dr. Kern is writing processes, right policies and processes, well processes to, to implement the policies we have. We don't want anybody to feel like they're not supported through the process. What we will not do is do it for them though, because that's where, as you heard from Jack Regan last week, when he was here, there was way too much happening at the central office. And that was part of what caused the backlog. So we're not leaving, we're going to leave anyone behind the process. It's going to, it's not going to be just one session, Mr. Brand. It's going to be multiple. Sometimes it's bringing them, right? Sometimes it's up, they come into our office and sometimes we're going to them.
Don't look at. All right. What else you got?
Well, I have a request. So we're going to need, the, the school's going to need $70,356.49 moved from the next quarter or even the quarter after into the current quarter. We're going to need it in multiple different categories. We need it in, let's see, 400 is operations and maintenance. We needed an instruction and we needed an admin. And the backside of this page is really, the details are just for me for notes because we have to keep, I have to make sure I keep track. But as an illustration of what we're doing, what you'll see here is all the account numbers from which the money needs to be moved to where it needs to be moved and for what, because it's like a jigsaw puzzle. So the request of the board is to do an advance appropriation. We are not asking for more money. We're asking to shift money from another quarter into this quarter to the amount of $70,356.49 so that we can pay invoices. This won't be the last time you'll see this, but it's hopefully going to be the second to last time.
How much was that again?
Seven zero three five six point four nine.
But these appropriations have been avoided.
Yes.
Absolutely.
If for next year, what you're going to see, if we're going to stay, if the school's going to stay in quarterly preparations, what will happen is we're in the process right now of identifying all the contracts we either do have or should have in place and creating a calendar for when those should be paid or recompeted. So what will happen is like the governor's school, we knew, we, we know we owe them a hundred and whatever thousand dollars a year. That should have been upfront loaded to the, the first quarter. So because this year was a test year and it was just simply the, the money was just divided by four. We weren't able to plan for bills that need to be paid in full upfront. The other issue is the backlog. I don't, I don't really know. We still haven't gotten to the Dominion Energy Bill. We're starting to pay the phone bills, which we have enough for. So next year there will be more planning. So the first quarter will be front loaded for appropriations. And we don't anticipate there being a big backlog in bills to pay. So yes, this could have been avoided.
Any more questions?
I appreciate your process of control. I think the citizens appreciate it also. Thank you, board. Something we haven't had. You need that appropriation tonight.
You got anything?
No, sorry. So these, just to clarify, these are monies that the board has budgeted, but not appropriated yet. So you're just requesting.
There's no new money. I take money from the third and fourth quarter and move it into the second quarter to pay these bills.
Is that going to cut you short in the third quarter?
Not for these bills, but I, I will let you know, Mr. Fisher, one of the things we started because this wonderful system with which we're working. We're having a little bit of trouble with some of the balances in the accounts. So I have created a manual checkbook for every single account line. So that every time there's a movement of money or a bill paid, I actually have to enter it in a spreadsheet. Because right now we're having problems with the system actually keeping updated balances. We run a report and it says there's this much money, then we go in to enter a purchase order and it says there's this much. I've talked to multiple people who know this system and they said, that's a glitch. Okay, so we're working with the vendor to try to figure out exactly what's happening, but because I'm so worried, there is one account right now. I have two accounts right now that I've already highlighted in yellow that one of them I think is $950 over for the year, but I can't be a hundred percent sure. I just cannot believe in this day and age that I have to create a manual checkbook and an Excel spreadsheet and keep it accounts, debits and deposits in it. But that's what we're doing to make sure we don't overspend. And to make sure there's enough for salary and benefits, right? We do not want to run, those accounts cannot run dry. And if we have to move stuff around, then that's what we have to do.
No ma'am, we got to keep those paychecks going.
I'd like to make a motion that we appropriate the amount that's needed.
I have a second.
I'll second it.
All in favor of that?
Mr. Chairman, if we could just read that as, so it's thirty dash six thousand sixty two hundred in the amount of five thousand four hundred four dollars. Six thousand dash sixty one hundred twenty six thousand seven fifty two forty nine cent. And six thousand sixty four hundred thirty eight thousand two hundred dollars for a total of seventy thousand three fifty six forty nine.
Forty nine.
All in favor? Any opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
Great, great.
Chair, may I start the board real quick, please?
Real quick.
Real quick. I just want everybody to know that I did a proposal. As I promised I would, I've sent it out to the board. I would be more than happy to ask any questions or answer any questions that the board has on the proposal. But I'd also like permission to share that proposal with Mr. Cost. Because he is working on the UHY recommendations, and I think this is part of that recommendation. So I'd like to share it with him, okay with the board. And I'll be more than happy to answer any questions in the future.
Do you think that will be prepared by December meeting? So we could have a discussion on it or you need some more time?
The document that I gave you is pretty thorough. It's got a timeframe in it and everything out, and it's an example of how a proposal should, in my opinion, take place to get the actual information in there. It's probably going to be January. And I'll be more than happy to answer any questions at the next meeting that you guys have regarding that proposal. But to be realistic, I think January, and I'd like to give Mr. Cost a little time to look at it.
Mr. Tadlock, can we go on and plan on having that on the agenda for January? And if something changes, we can.
So for the January meeting, place that on the agenda.
Yes.
Yeah. But that's.
I just want to bring it up because I kind of do it and I just wanted to invite me to.
Ladies and gentlemen, before we move any farther in the meeting, we're going to take a 10 minute break. Just along.
It sounds good.
We're going to get started again. Um, we're going to back up a little bit. I got the cart head of the horse earlier. Um, approval of minutes, we're going to go back and we're actually going to vote on.
Right.
So we've already made a motion to approve them. So for the October ninth, a regular meeting, all in favor. All right. The October twenty second meeting, special meeting, all in favor. Ah, right. Any opposed? The October twenty ninth meeting, special meeting. All those. Through. All right. All right. Thank you. I cleaned that up. All right. What we're going to do now, because of time, we're going to go ahead and open up the public comment part of the meeting. And the first person up is David Matera. Just a reminder to everyone that during the public comment, we have four minutes. You have four minutes.
Uh, ready? Okay. Today I'd like to talk about a new kind of bully that I've been forced to confront. I'm aware of schoolyard bullies and more recently cyberbully. Unfortunately, in the last year, I've been forced to deal with a zoning bull. Essentially, a person who feels that zoning regulations are merely suggestions that can either be obeyed or ignored according to his whims. And in doing so, he draws, he has no concern for the misery that he inflicts on his neighbors or the time wasted by county officials. In October of 2024, Brian and Jim showed up with their Realtor and looked at a piece of property on the great Comico that was for sale next to my home. I wandered over and after a few hellos were exchanged, Brian informed me that they were planning to buy the property and then added, the reason that we chose this area is because the people in charge don't care. Therefore, we'll be able to do anything we want. Jim continued, we're going to put in an RV park. There'll be a bunch of RV pads over there next to the water. Isn't this great? My mouth opened, but I was speechless. The property was purchased by a newly formed LLC that has Brian's wife listed as the registry agent. Two huge RVs showed up shortly thereafter. One tow behind trailer owned by Jim, the other self-propelled motorhome owned by Brian. Zoning bullies want to manipulate, coerce and intimidate their neighbors. They are likely to employ lawyers and perhaps surveyors to achieve their aim. And unfortunately, any neighbor who wants to challenge the zoning bully knows that it's going to cost thousands, or more likely tens of thousands of dollars, causing most neighbors to surrender without a fight. My neighborhood is adamantly opposed to what Brian and Jim are trying to do. And I realized that I have no choice but to fight back. I paid a lawyer a $5,000 retainer and will soon sign a contract with the marine surveyor to do an $8,000 repairing and survey. And this is probably only the beginning. As you probably realize, we don't have enough time to get into the specifics of this case. That can wait for another day. So slightly changing course. Today I'm discussing with you a zoning bully that is distressing a neighborhood with an RV park. Tomorrow you may hear a resident's complaint about a zoning bully involved in something more mundane like a bed and breakfast or a dog kennel. Then again, it might be worse, like a hunt club, a brewery, or even something as large as a sand and gravel pit. Zoning bullies are never going to stop trying. I offer some humble advice. When zoning regulations are written, the authors need to pay strict attention to the law of unintended consequence, which states that initial goals can have immediate positive effects, but unfortunately may lead to negative consequences later on. Remember, if you give zoning bullies an inch, they'll take a mile. Additionally, our zoning compliance needs to be kept as tight as possible. And when you are forced to question whether a zone bully is abusing both the regulations and his neighbors, fall back to the old adage, if it looks like a duck and quacks like a duck, it's probably a duck.
If you don't mind, sir, state your name and your address.
David Matera, one four three four Cedar Point Road, Eastville.
Thank you, sir.
I have hard copies if you'd like one.
Yes, sir. All right. The next speaker we have is, I believe, Ms. Carpenter. State your name and, and address, please, ma'am.
My name is Ariane Carpenter, one 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 seven Sherwood Drive in Redfield. Good. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. I represent the Sherwood Forest Shores Homeowners Association. As many of you may know, we are the largest association on the Little White Comico River. We are only one set of homeowners, but we represent about 500 property owners of the Little White Comico. As you may have heard before, and as you may have seen in the paper, the Little White Comico has not been dredged in over 10 years. It has silted up very badly. Our homeowners are very concerned. They're concerned for a number of reasons. One is the recreational value. Many of our homeowners bought their homes, homes down here in our water access community to have access to the Chesapeake Bay. They plan to go out in the bay to go fishing, to enjoy that with their families. Many of them are unable to do that because of the silt in the Little White Comico. Secondarily, they are very concerned about their property, most importantly, actually, most importantly about their property values. Because if it gets to a point where they were unable to access Chesapeake Bay from the Little White Comico Jetties inlet, then their property values will likely decline. They brought down here in Northumberland County because it's a great place to live in a water access community like Sherwood Forest Shores. Because it's a great community, it gives them access to the Little White Comito and to Chesapeake Bay. The Little White Comico Jetties is the only access from the Little White Comico River in the bay. And again, we represent many homeowners, like I, like I said, that there are others that I've seen here tonight who represent other interests such as commercial interests, such as Smith Point Marina and safety of life and property interests, interests, I see, Smith Point Sea Rescue here. So there are many of us on the Little White Comico who are very concerned. You will be hearing later, later from Sandy Maynard about a resolution that I am urging you to adopt to do as quickly as feasible dredging with federal and state funding of the Little White Comico Jetties and then eventual repair of the jetties. That's my comment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. The next person we have is Sandy Maynard.
Hi, my name is Sandra Maynard. I live at eighty-three Riverview Road in Heesville, which is in Ophelia on the Little White Comico. Mr. Fisher and members of the board, thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight on behalf of Judge the Little White Comico Jettie Citizen Advocacy Effort. As you know, the Little White Comico is a nine-mile tidal waterway with more than 123 miles of shoreline at the confluence of the Potomac River and the Chesapeake Bay. The jetty at this entrance is the only navigable, navigable connection between the Little White Comico River and the bay. This entrance supports daily operations of multiple watermen and more than 800 docks and ramps and several oyster processing, charter, marina and boatyard businesses. It is an essential access point for Smith Point Sea Rescue, whose volunteers respond to emergencies throughout the region as well as a critical refuge for boaters when weather turns quickly in the bay. The channel was federally authorized in 1935 with an eight-foot deep, 150-foot wide entrance protected by twin stone jetties. But today it is dangerously shoaled. Depths are now three feet and less across most of the inlet and the little that remains of a channel. The October storms overtopped the south jetty, accelerating sediment buildup, and I passed out some pictures of that. At low tide, the entrance is barely passable. This is no longer a distant concern of it may be dangerous. It is dangerous now. It is a current documented hazard that affects public safety, property values and local livelihoods. Several residents and seasoned captains have already reported boat damage from striking the shoaling in the navigation channel. The jetty requires both dredging and repair. With the end of regularly scheduled federal maintenance dredging, projects like this now compete for a limited pool of funds through Virginia's Waterway Maintenance Fund and federal community project funding. To unlock these dollars, three elements are required. A joint permit application, strong local and regional support and a clear public purpose such as safe navigation, economic impact and emergency access. This project meets all three. Northumberland County and the Northern Neck Planning District Commission have made real progress toward readiness. County Administrator Mr. Tadlock has coordinated the county's involvement. Under Executive Director Jerry Davis, Northern Neck Planning District Commission is serving as the official project sponsor and has advanced the technical work with the Virginia Institute of Marine Science and Shore Consulting. is serving as the official project sponsor and has advanced the technical work with the Virginia Institute of Marine Science and Shore Consulting, the project's engineering partner, in coordination with the Baltimore Norfolk Corps of Engineers since it sits on the Virginia Maryland line. The joint permit is on track for completion in December, positioning the project for two thousand twenty-six state and federal funding submissions. Tonight during public comment, I'm here to introduce the latest version of the resolution of support initially submitted in September. I understand the county's legal counsel has now reviewed it and that there is a possibility it may be ready for board action this evening. If the board chooses to move forward tonight, the community will be deeply grateful. If the board prefers to hold the item for consideration in December, we fully respect that process and remain ready to assist in the meantime. Either way, we look forward to working closely with the county, with county legal counsel, to ensure that the final wording clearly reflects the county's non-financial role by keeping the project as competitive as possible for unlocking two thousand twenty-six state and federal funding. The resolution accomplishes three important things. It strengthens our competitiveness for two thousand twenty-six funding by formally establishing the county's support. It ensures continued coordination with NMPDC, VIMS, and the US Car, Army Corps of Engineers, and it demonstrates unified community backing essential for unlocking state and federal resources. And importantly, no new tax or special assessment is required. Because this is a federally authorized navigation channel, funding is available through a competitive process from state and federal programs. This project is about restoring safe access, protecting livelihoods, and preserving more than four hundred years of maritime heritage on the northern neck. It supports the county's goals for economic vitality, public safety, and coastal resilience. Thank you for your time and for your continued service to the residents, businesses, and first responders who depend on this vital waterway every day. Are there any questions?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question I'd like to ask Mr. Gregory. Mr. Tadlock, what, what is there to gain by delaying this? For another month?
I don't see any, any benefit of that. I would, the resolution looks good. I reviewed it. I would recommend approval tonight. No reason not to proceed.
Thank you, thank you.
You're welcome.
When would be the appropriate time to make a motion to approve this resolution?
Do it now.
Do it now.
If you'd like. I think that we've got a little bit of steam rolling with this project and uh we need to show solidarity amongst all the parties that are concerned about the project and uh thank you for coming. I know we got more speakers that are gonna speak to this topic, but I'll go ahead and make the motion now to pass this resolution.
I know, second.
Second vote on it, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, passes.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, our next speaker is Pam Wooler.
Good evening. My name is Pamela Woolard, and I live at two nine zero Altown Road, Calio, Virginia. Thank you, Board of Supervisors and County Leadership, for allowing me the opportunity to speak to you tonight because I know that your time is very valuable. I come before you tonight as a parent, taxpayer, and parent of Northumberland County. I have a student in every school, seven, eleven, and sixteen. I have worked for the county for nineteen years, and I have lived here my whole life. All I ever wanted to do was get my degree in teaching and teach in the county where I was raised. I've been blessed to live that dream and raise my family here. This is the first year in my career that I have ever even considered employment somewhere else, and I fear I am not alone in that sentiment. What has happened in the last year and the reputation our school system has gotten has broken my heart. Yet despite this, despite the headlines, despite the gossip in the community and the gossip from family and friends, my colleagues and I teach every day. We show up. Because what we do is for something greater than money. We make a difference. We build relationships. We make kids believe in themselves. We help build the future of our county. We've had no raise, no step, no funds, and we do not always get the instructional materials that we need. Yet we teach. We show up every day. Sadly, it is the students and teachers who are suffering for the acts and situations that were not our fault. The consequences of poor financial decisions fall on us when all we wanna do is teach. I feel that somehow in the midst of all the sensationalism, as a county, we've forgotten our why when it comes to education, and that why is the children. We know there is no easy fix. We know it will take time, yet we continue to do more with less. When making financial decisions, however difficult they may be, please remember the teachers and the faces of the students you are making them for. Visit our NES Facebook page and see pictures of events and lessons. Reach out to Mrs. Williams and schedule a time to come visit our schools. Visit our students, visit our teachers, read a story to a class, play a math game, eat lunch and get to know our children, the ones that we show up for and teach every day, and the ones you are making financial decisions for. If you have questions about what we do, please reach out and ask. We have no secrets. Communicate with us and let us work as a team. Respect us and know that what we do every day matters, and we ask that you also respect that too. As Dr. Leslie has already said tonight, through clear communication, transparency, and a solution-based mindset, because we can't go backwards, we can move forward together as our motto says. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next speaker is Martha Williams.
Good evening. I'm Martha Williams. I live at seven five seven Academic Lane in Heathsville, Virginia. I appreciate the opportunity to speak this evening. I would like to first address some of the comments made at the October board meeting. You may not be aware, but when mentioning Title One, it is strictly a program that is used at the elementary school. Due to this, comments made about Title One were received as pertaining solely to the elementary school. As a principal in school, we feel that these comments were disrespectful to all who work so hard every day to ensure our students have everything they need to learn and grow. The idea that we have an incentive program based solely on candy is inaccurate, and the supposition the staff should buy incentives out of their pocket was unjustly critical. You would be shocked by how much these teachers spend of their money on our students. As a staff that works endless hours for our children and the community in which we all reside, it is imperative that we all work towards moving forward. NES is still very concerned about ensuring that the board receives balanced information. This said, I have met with their county finance team and Dr. Leslie, and we have gone over the information that was presented to this board. They have explained what their thoughts were, and all parties see that we had a breakdown in communication. The only thing we can do now is move forward, collaborating and communicating openly, working together for the good of our students, which in turn becomes the good of the community. I appreciate the positive discussion I have had with Dr. Leslie and the finance team and feel that we can move forward, understanding the needs of NES and how to continue being fiscally responsible. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. All right, that's all we had on the list to speak. Um, Morgan, we have anybody online? Got one more, they're all interested. One more? Okay, okay. Okay.
Um, I'm gonna talk about the dog problem in the county.
Please state your name and address, please.
Pamela Biggie in Reedville, Virginia. Um, so there are hundreds of calls seeking help from animal control. Last December and January, the county fielded four hundred and eighty-nine calls. While I still don't believe we need a leash law to fix it, I have some suggestions that may help. I'm going to zero in on one issue because I'm most familiar with it. Since the pandemic, many of our residents now have poultry they consider pets. This is not reflected in state law or by the county. So when a dog kills a pet hen or a duck, they have to resort to a long court process with a potential reimbursement of twenty-five dollars. Residents are often told to shoot the doll. While this might make sense for a farmer with the commercial flock, most residents who own a small flock of birds, like many of my neighbors, do not wanna shoot a pet dog. I would like to see the county establish an ordinance to include poultry as pets and increase fines that will force residents to take it seriously when their dog enters private property and kills a pet. Right now, state law deems a dog dangerous only if it has injured or killed a human or a pet dog or cat. I would encourage the board to include these small flocks of pet poultry such as hen, geese, and ducks like my neighbors have. I've met with Chief Deputy Sheriff about this, and he too would like to see fines increased greatly. We were talking about upwards of twenty-five hundred dollars or more for repeat offenders. These are people who just let their dogs go. Don't pay attention to the law. I met with, um, I'm sorry, under the current law, it takes a great deal of time to remove the offending animal, and it has to be proved that it has been killed poultry three times before the county can take action. So that's three pets have to be killed before any action can be taken. This is unfair to pet owners, and as we learn, heard here at a recent board meeting, we've had residents afraid to walk their own street. Part of the problem, the department only has one animal control officer, and from the number of calls he takes every day, he needs help. Besides the potential of hiring someone, I'm going to suggest you look to the federal park and refuge system as a model. Because of budget cuts, they rely a great deal on trained volunteers to carry out on their work at national parks and reserves, including the Rappahannock River Valley National Wildlife Center off the road. So what I'm talking about, in addition to changing the ordinance, increasing fines, I'm asking the board to research whether trained volunteers could help the department with the paperwork so that it would free up the animal control officer to be out in the field enforcing the laws. We already have a force of volunteers running shelters, so if this is legal, it would provide some relief. So those are my suggestions. Do you have any questions?
What was your address?
The exact address? Two one two Shep's Point Drive.
Shep's Point.
Shep, you know what's going on over there. Yeah. And um I, I would be happy to help out with any kind of ordinance you wanna come up with because Chief Deputy and I talked about sitting down at the table and drawing something up for you, so just let us know.
Okay. Anyone online?
Yes, are we allowed to speak from online?
Hello, can you state your name and address, please?
Yes, sir. Jonathan Harris, three one seven nine Dotley Road.
Okay.
I wanted to speak about the hunting access and the insurance requirement on the tri-county land. I did wanna thank the county for working to reopen the public hunting access to the tri-county tract of uh county-owned land that has long served as an important hunting area for local residents. Many of us appreciate the efforts that have been made to make this land available again after last year's unavailability caused by the ongoing right-of-way dispute. I do wanna respectfully raise the concern regarding a new condition placed on hunters this year, specifically a requirement around carrying separate hunting liability insurance and to secure access permission from adjoining landowners instead of using the established right-of-way that has been used for more than twenty-five years. Uh, these new requirements create a challenge for individual hunters and local residents who have historically relied on the property for affordable hunting. Many small or independent hunters do not carry private hunting insurance and may not have personal connections with adjoining property owners. As a result, the combination of the limited access route and new insurance mandate could unintentionally restrict public use of what is ultimately county-owned land meant for all residents. I understand the county's intent is to manage liability and respect private property rights, but I ask the board to consider a balanced solution, perhaps pursue a legal remediation for access through the longstanding right-of-way, while also pursuing a potential liability waiver or a county-held group insurance option, or even a seasonal permit process. These measures could preserve both safety and equitable public access. So I thank you for your time and attention on this matter and your continued work to support all of those who use outdoor recreational in Northumberland County. Thank you.
Thank, thank you.
All right.
Got anyone else? Let me, let me finish up with online and I'll. No one else? Okay, yes, sir.
Joseph Mison, uh, eighteen oh seven Dallas Road. Um, I was gonna address the issue with the county right of way as well. I may not be quite as diplomatic as Mr. Harris just was. Um, I don't know how many of the county know, but that road has been blocked off for access for a little over two years now. Um, it seems the county doesn't seem to be involved in doing anything to get this back open. As a landowner myself, the, the county wants me to pay my property taxes, but I've got over forty acres of land that I can't access through the right-of-way. It has been the right-of-way to this property for over forty years. It just seems kinda odd that, you know, the county wants their money for the taxes, but they don't seem to be wanting to do much to get things open for me, the other, and what else. County property is the furthest property at the very end of this road. So it seems the county shouldn't have a great interest in this road. Um, just as another slight thing which tangents off of this, the county property there with the farm landowner, what is the process, well, does anyone know what the process is for the land they helped bid with? Because as long as I've been there and everyone I've talked to in the county, they have been farmed by the same entity for over thirty years. No one has any record, well, no one can tell me anything about ever being out in public. I just don't see for one person, one entity for that long, anything to possibly begin anywhere near market value.
Right, now, that has been brought up, I think, in last month, and that's gonna be looked at this year. And to answer your question about the county doing anything about the right-of-way, the county is. The attorney right there, right now, is in the process of working on getting the right-of-way cleared up. Uh, we've been instructed by the other two counties that own this property as well to get the right-of-way issue taken care of.
That's good. The other thing, I don't know how much communication goes back into different agencies within the county, but it does seem kind of odd to me that the ones who are blocking the road have been able to get a building permit, a set permit, assuming an occupancy permit while this issue is still going on.
I don't know the answer to that, sir.
Just seems a little interesting. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we're gonna close our public comments. And we have one public hearing tonight. And uh, that's a request by Red Oak LLC um for a conditional use permit to allow light industry on property zone A one. Martha. Got someone here representing yet? We have a request by Red Oak LLC owner for a conditional use permit to allow light industry on property zone A one agriculture. Property is shown as tax map parcel fifty-one dash one, dash one twelve B, and is located on Jesse DuPont Memorial Highway. All right, sir. Tell us a little bit about your project.
Uh, good evening. Uh, my name is Will Bear. Um, currently, uh, live in Lancaster County. Grew up there, went to Lancaster High School. Um, I apparently own and operate a landscape and hard state company um that I started back in high school. Um, and, you know, have been thinking about future plans and growth and whatnot, and, um, and bought this piece of property with the hopes of building a building there, um, that could essentially, you know, serve our day-to-day operations, um. Basically, at the moment, it's, I have myself and two employees. Um, currently, I mean, everything is done from my home. We're essentially going to someone's house to perform a service for them. Um, so at the moment, we don't, you know, have any storage of materials. We don't have truly a home base, um, we don't stock any materials or sell retail at the moment. Um, but that, moving forward, just, you know, was, was kind of my goal. Um, not that I currently need to sell retail, but the reason I applied for this initial use permit was just to not close myself off in case a fellow landscaper or customer buyers or whatever, um, wanted to come pick up, you know, a small amount of materials or, or things like that. Um, I've, I've read all of the conditions, I, you know, I'm in agreement with them. I appreciate all the planning commission and all of their insight and, um, opportunity to work with, with them as well as Philip, and, um, so I'm just here asking for support as well, and happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Board members, have any questions?
Yes, uh, ten or twelve years ago, maybe plus or minus, were you the owner of that, of that area?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Good. I'm glad to hear that.
Glad, glad.
Because we deny, we deny whatever that person wanted.
Okay, okay. Yeah, last fall. It was the property last fall.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I've been in contact with Mr. Barrett regarding this property. I've been there, I'm very familiar with it. Oh. I'm in, I'm in favor of what he wants to do. I think the property is there to, uh, to be used in this type of manner. It's right next to the dump, alongside the dump, where it joins the county property.
Well, all right, we need to open this up. Right. Comment, and we'll come back. Um, we don't have anyone on the sign-up sheet. Uh, anyone here tonight wish to speak on his behalf on his project? Yes, sir. Come on up. State your name and address, please.
Uh, Vance Heavely, eighty-one, ninety-nine, Northumberland Highway. And, uh, I'd just like to see Mr. Barrett get this. I don't think it's going to cause any problem. Oh, I think he does a good job. I think it would serve a nice purpose, and there's a lot of work in that low end of the county that's going into Lancaster County. I think he could help keep some of that heat. And I just think it would be a good thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Heavely. Anyone else like to speak? Okay, anyone online? Okay, we'll close the comment portion of this.
Mr. Fisher, you will make your comment?
Yes, uh, I'd like to make a motion that we go ahead and approve this.
Okay, can we get the conditions, please? Have Mr. Morrison read the conditions.
Yes, sir. Suggested conditions if approved are that all necessary permits under licenses shall be obtained from all regulatory agencies, including but not limited to the Virginia Department of Transportation. Your sales office shall be located on the same parcel as the gravel mulch, et cetera, for all retail transactions. All retail sales will only be for products ancillary to the landscaping business. This operation shall be kept clean, neat, and organized. Only vehicles or equipment associated with the operation of this business shall be stored on the property. All signage shall comply with zoning ordinance. All lighting shall be non-reflective and directed downward to prevent any glare on Route two hundred. All storage of dry goods shall not be in a cargo container. There shall be no storage of materials between the proposed building and Route two hundred. And non-compliance of any of these conditions shall result in this permit to come back before the board supervisors for possible revocation.
And with that, again, I would, so, go ahead and read.
Yes, sir.
This motion is made in due consideration of administrative record before the body, including the planning commission, deliberations and recommendations, the information received, these are the public hearing, including statements offered by staff, the applicant and members of the public, the public health and safety, the general welfare of the community, public necessity, convenience, and exercise of good zoning practices in the body's legislative progressive and pursuit of the body's statutory authority. And with that, I'll make a motion that we pass it.
Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's approved.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett.
All right, that's, uh, into the, uh, yeah, public hearing, all right. Mr. Hadlock, I guess we're going to go back to, uh, county administrator report.
All right, it was flashing. I didn't know. All right, the first item we have is the, uh, member for, for October twenty twenty-five. Uh, we had five new structures. Uh, total construction cost for the month, five point five million. Uh, total construction cost year-to-date, fifty-three point seven million, which is approximately three point seven million, uh, below this time last year. Uh, we have several supplemental appropriations. The first one is, uh, insurance reimbursement for vehicle repairs for sheriff's office, uh, vehicle to thirty-one oh two, three thousand twelve, in the amount of three thousand, one hundred forty-six dollars and twenty-two cents.
How much was that again?
Two thousand, one hundred forty-six dollars and twenty-two cents.
Can I have a motion? Motion to approve the reimbursement?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
Next one is the interest accrued on the opioid abatement funds for September, uh, going to forty-seven dash fifty-one oh two dash thirty-two hundred in the amount of seventy-two dollars and sixty-five cents.
Motion to approve?
Motion made.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Uh, next item is spay and neuter distribution, uh, to thirty-five oh one dash fifty-eight oh two in the amount of twenty-three dollars and seventy-five cents.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, next one is for the animal-friendly plate program, uh, going to thirty-five oh one dash fifty-eight oh two in the amount of a hundred and sixty-three dollars and forty-eight cents.
Both are approved. Second.
Second, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Next item we have is, uh, the staff is requesting that the rehab, the old rehab unit uh, be designated as surplus. This is for the nineteen ninety-six Ford F three fifty ambulance. Uh, so if the board chooses to, uh, surplus this, we would list this on GovDeals.
Motion to approve?
Salute.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
All right, next item is regarding some opioid, uh, items. The board had previously passed, uh, the required resolution confirming the governing body's authorization to allow the required legal counsel to execute the participation agreement on Northumberland County's behalf. Uh, and that was tied to the Purdue-Sackler and the Group Eight of Manufacturers settlement, and that was done on August fourteenth, twenty twenty-five. Uh, however, uh, there's kind of two parts that we're going to be asking for here. Uh, the first part is that the, the administrator still requests that the participation agreements be executed by the governing body uh, per the settling defendant's request. Uh, we are asking the board to approve Exhibit K, which is in your packet, authorizing the county administrator and/or the assistant county administrator to sign such document. I guess the second part to that, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. uh, Gregory, uh, we are also asking the board to authorize either the county administrator or the assistant county administrator the authority to execute any instrument related to the opioid litigation that may be required to participate in settlements going forward to help streamline the process. Um, if any direct action is needed by the board, such as resolutions and such, we would certainly bring those items back to the board.
Could both item, which you just stated in front of us, be approved by one motion? We don't need two motions. It's all grouped in one, isn't it?
Uh, well, since you have a separate resolution for the first item, I would recommend you separate them out.
Okay.
Just so the record is clear.
All right. What was the first one again, Mr. Hadlock? Did you get it?
So it's authorizing, uh, either the county administrator or the assistant county administrator, uh, authorization to sign that Exhibit K on behalf of the board of supervisors.
Can we have a motion?
I will, I will, I'll make the motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the second part.
The second part is authorizing the county administrator and/or the assistant county administrator the authority to execute any instrument related to opioid litigation that may be required to participate in settlements going forward to help streamline the process. And of course, any resolutions or anything like that that require board action, we would take, bring that back to the board.
Okay, can I get a motion?
Go move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
Sorry, did we jump over agenda item F? Emergency services.
The, uh, we did.
Thank you. Um, the November transfer from, from revenue to expenditure account for EMS billing, uh, going to fifty-six dash thirty-five oh six, fifty-nine, fifty-six in the amount of ten thousand, nine hundred sixty-seven dollars and twenty-two cents.
Motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Right.
Thank you for catching that, Mr. Williams. Um, next item is, uh, more for clarification. Um, the minutes and motion made on the September eleventh, twenty twenty-five reflect that monies requested for the two buses for the school division were coming from the county's capital improvement fund. Uh, there is the capital improvement fund, and then under that, we have the, uh, county and the, the school. So, uh, it, it is still county monies, but we want to clarify that it is the school fund or school CIP monies that is, that are being used. Again, it's just for clarification for five years down, down the road from now that if someone goes back to look at that, we just wanted to clarify. So we're just asking the board to amend the minutes, uh, from September eleventh, uh, to reflect this clarification in the motion.
A mode of, with, then the, the.
Okay, second. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Next item is regarding the personnel policy modifications. Uh, there have been some discussions about the leave accrual for EMS, and this is specifically for the twenty-four-hour personnel. Um, EMS administrative personnel would not fall under this. Um, but in your packet, you do have, uh, information that modifies the accrual rate and the carryover amounts that those twenty-four-hour shift employees can accrue and carry over. Um, one, one of the items that was discussed on this was to potentially have something effective January one of twenty twenty-six. So I want to get this, uh, information to you as soon as possible for you to look at.
We have a motion to approve that?
Necessary that we do that tonight?
I don't think you need, we don't.
Rather hold off till?
No. December?
Is there pressing time-wise?
No, I, I think the timeline, it's up to the board, however y'all wish to proceed. Um, I know there was some discussions about possibly doing, uh, January one. So we could do that at, at the December meeting if the board wishes to take a little bit more time to review.
That's one.
That would be my suggestion. I'm sorry.
Yes, sir. I, I would just like to have something in place in January to show these EMS providers that we are trying to sure, make some improvements and to work with. Okay, so that'll be on next month's agenda.
We can place that on next month's agenda. The next item we have is the invitation for a bid for the mobile classroom removal, and this is, are the two mobile classrooms located at the old school board office that the county now owns. Um, we did have earlier this year, we had individuals or several individuals that were interested in, uh, looking at those, uh, two units. Uh, they have looked at those units, but we have not heard from those individuals any further. Um, so we want to bring this back to the board, uh, to see if the board wanted to move forward with the, uh, bid process, or I, I know the, the individuals contacted some of the board members directly, so I don't know if that's something that y'all wish to follow up with the individuals, or I, I don't have the, the specific contact information for those individuals.
If we move forward with the process of getting bids and they still wish to have one of those mobile homes, I mean, that wouldn't interfere with any of that. I, I, what I'm looking at is just, you know, we wait another month or two, wait for someone to decide, will it not? They want one of these mobile homes? It's a month or two that we've wasted where we actually could have made some progress in getting something cleaned up.
Typically, what we put in our bid documents is that, um, the bid decision is up to the board whether to accept or deny all bids. Uh, I don't know if that would cover what we're, what you're looking for. Um,
Yeah, it would take, I mean, once you issue the, the, uh, invitation for bids, it's going to take time for them to come in. So you do have a window of time where you could, um, allow for that decision to be made while still moving forward with the, with the procurement. Um, ultimately, if, if you change direction, look, Mr. Hadlock is right, you could just reject all the bids.
And I think you said that these individuals had contacted Mr. Heavely?
They had, yes.
I'd like to see us move forward with the RFP and, and have Sahini reach out to them, or try to reach out to them one more time. In that way, we we're making some progress. There, I don't, I definitely don't want to take it from them if it's something that they didn't have it. Um, but I'm just worried eventually somebody's going to break into one of them and set them on fire.
No.
Everybody's okay with that?
Sure.
We could, uh, just get a motion to, to do that, if y'all want to move forward in advertising that.
I'll, I'll put that in form of a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Yeah.
Great, um, next item we have is regarding the residential convenience center decal program. And it's a modification to the policy that, uh, we're recommending to the, the board. Um, as we were putting the policy together, you know, it's one of those things you don't, you can't think of all of the possibilities of different things that may, may come about. But, um, under the convenience center decal under one point four B, it specifies that if more than two decals are needed or replacement stickers needed, a completed form shall be submitted to the county administrator's office. No more than five decals shall be issued to one address property owner. Um, we've had several instances where, um, individuals need more than the five, which at the time we did not think that that would be possible. But, um, one of the additions to that language that we're recommending is, however, the board of supervisors recognizes that unique or unforeseen circumstances may occasionally arise. In such cases, the county administrator is authorized to review the situation and at their discretion, approve the issuance of additional decals as deemed appropriate. If there's other language that the board wished to entertain, uh, we, we can certainly do that. We're trying to address some of the concerns that, uh, the individuals had.
Hello, is it a board? Well. Each person receive the number of decals according to the vehicle. They, uh, each, uh, citizen receive the amount of decals with the number of vehicles they have, right?
Now, this, what we did, we based it off of the personal property tax bills this year. Um, and because of that, there are some individuals that received more than the, the five. Um, it was just the way that those uh, the personal property billing is set up. Uh, so in in some cases where the individuals received less than what they needed, um, the office, they've been coming to um Morgan and and Drew, I've been handling that side of things and securing additional um stickers if they they need those. We've actually had some individuals return stickers to us, um, because they received more than what they needed. Um, but again, it's, this is a certain certain instances where individuals are requesting additional um stickers because of their specific need.
And if if I could add, we have residents of Northumberland County who own property here that didn't receive any because they don't own any automobiles registered in Northumberland County, but they own property, therefore they didn't receive any stickers. This would help cover them as well.
Have a, in this, this scenario is it, an elderly couple has someone coming in that does yard work that lives in Richland County. And they do yard work and they're using their truck to haul off the debris, the limbs and all. How, what is the process for them to get the trash dumped in Northumberland County? I mean, that to me.
Yeah, I think we've covered that.
And that's, that's what I'm getting at.
That, that is one of the cases. We've had several others, but one of the cases with that is that, of course, they come to the window, they're not a county resident. Um, so we're not able to provide them them the sticker. Um, now, in in certain circumstances, the property owner could come in. Um, but what we look at is how many stickers they have been issued. Um, and we're keeping track of how many, if they receive two and we issue three more, we're keeping track of that in a database.
Okay. Anything else, Mr. Long, on that?
No.
Okay. What's the pleasure of the board on this?
Do we approve the policy with the new verbiage?
Okay, second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
That's all I have.
So you got it. All right. Let's uh, we'll go on and move forward with the approval of the check register.
A motor will approve.
Get a second? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Board comments, Mr. Weems?
I've just got a question for staff, actually, and that is, how are we coming along with the permitting process for whatever we're going to do to take care of the icebreaker situation outside of Cockles Creek at the mouth of the Graywood Common沟?
Yes, sir. Um, we have been in contact with the MRC for potential permitting options. Um, we did have a gentleman uh that assisted us earlier with a buoy. Um, and we have reached out to him uh to ask some additional questions as far as options for either knocking the the rock pile down or uh putting markers, physical markers out there. Uh, so we are still pursuing that.
That's it, okay. Mr. Long?
Yes, we still, we still have the funds to help uh uh citizens with uh with heat or we still have those funds going out.
That I would need to get with Ms. Clayton uh with Social Services. We can get an answer for you.
Okay. That's all I have.
That's all you got, Mr. Long? I don't really have anything other than just, I want to thank everybody for being patient with me, Mike.
You've done good job.
Um, Mr. Fisher, you got the comment?
Yes, uh. We're relating back to the dog situation in Northumberland County. I had the occasion to meet with Mr. Gregory and Mr. Tadlock this past week, and we discussed the current curtain ordinance on dogs in Northumberland County and whether or not we need to add or subtract anything from it. Uh, we discussed with also the Commonwealth attorney was present, Miss Jane Wrightson. And we have a situation down on Pebble Lane that's been a headache to a lot of people in that community, to say the least. Discussing it with Ms. Wrightson and looking at the current law and discussing with Mr. Gregory, we have found that uh evidence has been presented to where the county can hopefully move forward with Ms. Wrightson's cooperation and support to eliminate the problem down on Pebble Lane. Uh, and I want to let you know that we have uh discussed this thoroughly, and we're going to keep an eye on it, and we're going to try to work with the sheriff's department and get their support and get as much done on this and get it taken care of, so this problem is allevi- alleviated and that other citizens in in the future won't have to put up with this. I think, is that a fair assumption of what we did?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. If I might just add one thing, uh, if anybody has incidents like this, the important, one of the most important things to do is to report them. Okay, if if the uh, if the authorities don't know that they occurred or if there's no um, uh, no real time information about it, then it's harder for them to do anything about it. So if you have videos on your phone or even if, even if you just write down a few notes about what happened and what you saw and what, and that kind of thing, it's going to help um, law enforcement and the Commonwealth attorney. Thank you, that that will help a great deal. And and just to clarify, I think somebody in public service made a comment that uh there a a dog has to kill three chickens before anything can be done, and that that is not true. Um, while chickens or poultry are not considered pets under the state code and they they wouldn't, the county on its own volition could not reclassify poultry as or chickens as pets or ducks or rabbits for that matter as pets, they're still livestock
Livestock.
under the state code. Um, if a, if a dog attacks livestock, including poultry, chickens, ducks, what have you, um, action can be taken that should be reported to Animal Control and um they have tools to to address those problems.
So that that leads to the question that I have. I mean, we have some people in this county that have horses that are probably pretty valuable animals. And I know in another county at one time, I remember a case where some dogs killed some alpacas. And I guess my thing of it is, where is our our ordinance as far as livestock? If 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 a chicken can't be classified as a pet and it's livestock, do we have a strong enough ordinance in penalties and fines for livestock?
We, the, we discussed this with Mr. Fisher, and we went through the ordinance. We believe that the county, the Commonwealth attorney and county law enforcement can take action just based upon state code provisions that are, that are applicable, regardless of what the the county ordinance says. Um, the county ordinance does need to be updated, and we're working on that now.
Okay.
But that's not, that that should not prove as a stumbling block to enforcing state code provisions that allow action to be taken against dogs that are aggressive or that attack uh people or livestock or an other animals in the county.
Okay, and and that was my next question was, was it being being looked at and updated?
Yes.
Yes.
So long ago. Um, anybody got anything else? Any staff got any comments?
I'll, I'll be happy to, I'll be happy to speak with you after the meeting. I'll be happy to speak with you.
Okay, all right. Um. And all the board comments, I guess the next thing we have is the closed meeting. Okay, Mr. Tadlock, you got some verbiage for us?
Need a motion that the Northumberland County Board of Supervisors convene a closed meeting pursuant to Virginia Freedom of Information Act, section two point two thirty-seven eleven A one for the discussion and consideration of personnel matters, section two point two thirty-seven eleven A eight for consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel. Section two point two thirty-seven eleven eight twenty-nine, discussion of the award of public contract involving the expenditure of public funds, including interviews of bidders or offers and discussion of the terms or scope of such contract where a discussion in open session would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body. Invited to attend the closed meeting as necessary are the county administrator, county attorney, uh assistant county administrator, if the board wishes, the sheriff, uh, because they are deemed necessary and their presence will reasonably aid the board in its consideration of the topics to be discussed pursuant to Virginia Forty, section two point two thirty-seven twelve.
All right, before we do that, you got something to our C's? Okay. All right.
Then for motion, we go to closed meeting?
Motion going to closed meeting, yes.
So move.
You know, second.
Second it.
All of it.
Uh.
Thank you, Jim.
Motion that the Northumberland Board of Supervisors return to public meeting and certify by roll call vote that only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered during the closed meeting.
No motion?
So move.
Second?
Second.
All right, roll call vote, Mr. Fisher. Mr. Stanhony's absent, Mr. Brand's aye. Mr. Long? Mr. Wee?
Aye.
All right, Mr. Tadlock, what do you need from us now for us?
All right, um, was it Charles' intent as far as moving forward with the sheriff's office uh request? Um, for the first uh sheriff's office position uh to reclass from record specialist to patrol deputy capped at fifty-five thousand.
Make a motion that we approve it?
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, it passes.
All right, uh, next item is promotion for employee ID number one zero two four six with a salary increase of seven thousand two hundred and eighty dollars sixty-six cent. And that would be effective December first, twenty twenty-five.
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes.
Next item is uh to approve the nine point three percent salary increase for an employee ID number one zero five one five for the master deputy certification in circuit court. And that would be effective December first, twenty twenty-five.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
All right, uh, we do need the supplemental appropriation for that. Uh, the total amount is four thousand seven hundred eleven dollars and three cent. Um, it would be the salaries one to twenty-one oh six dash one thousand one in the amount of three thousand eight seventy, seventy cent. Uh, FICA to twenty-one oh six, two thousand one in the amount of two hundred ninety-six dollars eleven cent. VRS to twelve oh six, one, I'm sorry, that should be twenty-one oh six, two thousand two in the amount of four hundred ninety-eight dollars and fifty-five cent. And VRS group life, twenty-one oh six, two thousand three in the amount of forty-five thou- forty-five dollars sixty-seven cent.
Motion to approve.
Got a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Next item, we have the approval of uh Aaron Terrell Taylor um, effective December first, twenty twenty-five with a salary of thirty-seven thousand nine oh seven seventeen cent for the sanitary district.
Oh, it need to get the the check of them.
Right? Um, you could put
Let's say.
Subject to the
Subject to background check.
Yes.
Make a move.
Second.
All approve?
Aye.
All right, the next one is for um Troy Allen Embry, effective December first, twenty twenty-five with a salary of thirty-seven thousand nine oh seven seventeen cent for the sanitary district in the same uh language, subject to the background check.
All moving. All right, you second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, and the last item we have is to move forward with the low bid of uh ten thousand dollars with Cisneros for the roof replacement at the EMS house. Um, to move forward with that project.
Okay, you're going to add the contingency on that?
It, if y'all would like, we could do with the option up to, if you would like to do five thousand uh and change orders if needed.
That would be my motion.
Good.
Second. You got a second? All in favor?
Aye.
That's all I've got.
All right, I guess the next step is motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second? All in favor?
Uh, yes.